Have a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll open up the call to the public, first call of the public. Do we have any requests to speak? See no hands up on the internet, no one here, so we'll close call to the public and open up the public hearing and presentation. The public hearing is to receive comments regarding your Behind Barbecue Birds and Bones located at 270 North Main Street, Florence, Arizona, received from Justin Juth Caffini, agent for the Behind Barbecue Birds and Bones for the Series 12 restaurant license for council recommendation for approval or disapproval of said license.
Vice Mayor, members of council. Ms. Garcia is sick today. I am Ian Newcomb, Deputy Town Clerk, presenting this for her. The clerk's office received the liquor license application for a Series 12 restaurant and bar application. We have posted a notice at the location for the last 20 days and the clerk's office has not received any comments. Mr. Caffini is in attendance tonight if there are questions from the council. Thank you.
Mr. Caffini, would you like to say anything to the council? Counsel, do we have any questions for Mr. Caffini?
I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to potentially approve this item and welcome to Florence. What is your anticipated open date? Sorry.
June 1st.
I had a question. Your flooring, I heard something about your flooring. Would you have an issue with anything wrong with your floor or anything like that?
When we pulled up the old floor, we had some issues, but we remediated all of those.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions? No questions from the public? At this time, I close the public hearing and presentation. Are we making a motion at this time?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we'll make a motion to either approve or disapprove.
Make a motion to approve the item 6A.
A second.
Second.
You had a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? That recommendation is approved. We'll go to item 6B, American Medical Response Presentation from Jim Walters.
Vice Mayor, members of council, hopefully had a chance tonight to walk past the ambulances that were out front. Those are from our service provider, AMR, who currently has four staff 24-hour ambulances in the town of Florence. Over the recent years, the company has replaced the Florence units twice to maintain reliable service levels. The ambulances that are at town tonight are the third and latest additions to the Florence fleet, and they've been responding to calls and taking care of our citizens since February 21st of this year. Just wanted to present that and let you know that we have Operations Manager Dave Giacabelli, who works very closely with our department to make sure we're providing the highest level of service to our citizens, so hopefully you had a chance to see that.
Does anyone on the council have any questions? If we have no questions, we will move on to the next agenda item, item number seven, Consent Agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless council members or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, Adoption Resolution, 1863-23, a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving and authorizing Mayor Tara Walters, Town Manager Russell Martin, and Finance Director Rebecca Jimenez to act as design interiors for the transactions of business on the town of Florence banking accounts and declaring an emergency. Item B is Adoption and Resolution, numbers 1864-23, a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch, Unit 33B. Item C, Award $1,000 for the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce Downtown Events Assistant Application Spring. And item D, Accept the Register of Demands ending February 28th, 2023, in the amount of $2,226,351.83. That is your consent agenda. Does anyone want an item removed? If not, then we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? The consent agenda passes. We'll move on to item eight, New Business. Discussion, Approval, Disapproval to Enter Into a Professional Service Agreement between the town of Florence and the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce to manage the Florence Visitor Center and McFarland State Historic Park through December 31st, 2023, in the amount not to exceed $55,000 annually. Mr. Harvey Kraus.
Vice Mayor Mendoza and members of the town council. The Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce has been managing the visitor center and the McFarland State Historic Park since June of 2013, and the town has had an agreement with the chamber for these operations. It's expiring this month, and this agreement that's before you tonight will extend the agreement with, under the same terms and conditions, until the end of this calendar year, December 31st, 2023. After that, prior to that, the staff will initiate a request for qualifications to solicit proposals for management of the visitor center as well as the McFarland State Parks. The chamber has been operating the and managing the McFarland State Park in accordance with the inter-agency agreement that the town agreed to or approved back in January of 2021, and that will continue to occur with this extension of this agreement. The town is responsible for maintenance of the interior as well as the exterior of the building, pays all the utility costs, and provides the chamber with office space at no cost to the chamber. The compensation remains the same. It's $13,750 on a quarterly basis. With a, if you annualize that out on an annual basis, that's no more than $55,000 a year. The agreement does include a 90-day contract extension in case there's a need to extend the contract beyond the December 31st date. The chamber also is required to submit written performance reports on a quarterly basis to the the town council, as well as an annual presentation on their activities at the end of the, at the beginning of next calendar year. That concludes my comments. Mr. Roger Beatty from the Greater Chamber of Commerce is here and can answer any specific questions you might have regarding this operations.
Yes, I do. So, questions, comments, and whoever wants to answer, you or Mr. Beatty, it doesn't really matter. So, on this, I read the, I've seen the quarterly reports for the last couple of years, and the annual reports, missing one annual report. And I gotta say that I would like for us to step up the bar on those reports because they tell us how many visitors they had for the visitor center and for McFarland, but that's really about it, and how much the gift shop makes. What I would like to see is a more in-depth, like what does it cost them to actually run McFarland? What are they spending on staff? Things like that. I would like for us to know what the utilities cost on a monthly basis so that we have a better understanding of what it actually costs us to run McFarland Park outside of the money that we're paying the chamber to do it for us. Because if it's costing us more than the $55,000, then we need to look at the, at what our contract is offering. Or if it cost, if we're giving them $55,000, but it's costing them beyond that to run the park, we need to know that. I would also like some maintenance records, and I would like for us to get caught back up with the state on the fixes to the exterior that they were supposed to do and have not completed on the porch. There's supposed to be another entry to that, and we really need that because it's preventing traffic flow and it's congesting, congesting everybody up on that platform, and we need a better flow to that if there were an emergency or something. There's only one way off of it, unless you're willing to climb over, and so I don't suggest we have people do that. I would also like to see from the chamber something that tells us that their staff is being trained on the artifacts and that they understand how to curate those type of artifacts that are in there, how to manage the inventory, when was the last time an inventory was done of what's in there? Just things like that. I would really like for us to treat it like it is. It's a museum to an extent, and so I would like for us to step up the bar on that. You know, we started with the rodeo grounds and are re-contracting for that, saying, okay, we, we want to step up, and people said we couldn't do it and it wouldn't be successful, and it's very successful. And so I want to do the same now for this contract. I want us to raise the bar and make it so it's more successful so that we have more visitors when our visitors come, that they are pleased with what they see and they want to come back. I would like to make sure that our chamber, our Allison's Department, and the museum we do have, that they all work together to make sure that everybody is helping each other so that we can increase the visitors. If we're trying to be a tourist area, then we need to all work together to make sure that we are attracting those tourists and that we're reminding them that there is more than just one thing to do in Florence, that there are lots of things and, and you can circle around and hit all of these. So I would really just like to kind of see us in this next year step it up a level on the information that's being given to council, and then just on the events and working with others and everything like that for McFarland.
Okay. Councilman Cordis, duly noted. I don't know if the chamber wants to address some of those issues. Some are town issues, some are chamber issues, and we'll, we'll work closely with, with Roger to prepare a more comprehensive report. He, I guess he agrees and shook his head. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Vice Mayor, council members, there might be some things that you're looking for that we can't provide because there are some things that we're quite honestly not allowed to touch because there are some, some of the exhibits that are part of the state parks that we don't have access to. Does that make sense? I mean, I don't know. When we, when the contract first started, SHPO or whoever was managing it had a individual that was in charge of the state parks museums, and two years ago, I believe, that, that position was eliminated. So, the state parks connection to us, the person that curates the museum aspect of it is no longer, they don't have that position anymore. So we've been handling that kind of internally and kind of stepped up a little bit after we saw that they weren't going to hire anything. We do have the maintenance person that we kind, that we kind of addressed, and we will get that list to you, but there may be some things that we just can't address because I don't have, because there's no person to address that. All the other stuff, I think, working with Mr. Kraus and stuff, we can't provide all that information.
What I would like then, Harvey, is for you to step in and figure out how we get somebody, whether it's from SHPO, from the state, or whatever, because what I don't want to happen is in a year, somebody comes from the state or somewhere and decides to take inventory, and all of a sudden they're telling us we're missing pieces. So, that's why I think it's very important that we have a very detailed list of the items that are there, rather they, because we, I know there are items that the chamber personally has purchased as well, and so I want to make sure that we know what belongs to who and who's responsible for that item because I don't want us to later on down the road end up somewhere where the town and the chamber are on the hook for a piece of artifact that none of us have ever seen, that left 10 years ago with somebody or has been damaged. You know, I'd like to make sure that all the artifacts are being protected the way they're supposed to. They're, they're in an old building and they're being stored in an old building outside of, of that, so I just want to make sure that everything, I'm trying to protect us all on the artifacts and then just make sure that we are, because I'm sure there's things being stored that we have no idea are in there and would be great to be brought out if we can. And if there's things that the state doesn't want us to ever touch, then maybe we should ask them to move them on to somewhere else where they could be better managed.
I, I think it's private, public knowledge. I hope I'm not sharing anything, but there's, the storage unit that we have is shared by all the states. It's not just a McFarland, that three-story McFarland thing is not just McFarland. It's stor, it's, has, holds storage for a number of state parks. So, and to answer your question, and I know that Jennifer, it looks like Jennifer Evans is on the call. She may be an asset to help with this conversation once we get through to it because she was there at the beginning and has a firm understanding of everything, but I know for a fact that there's not a all-encompassing inventory. They started it, and then when, and I don't remember the lady's name, Jennifer might know the lady's name, when she kind of moved on, she came back, she came down and taught my staff how to document the numbers, but because of the conversations I've had with Ms. Evans before, I did not want to take that responsibility on at that time because it did involve going down into the places that we're supposed to kind of be staying away from.
So then all the more reason if it's, if it is not just our town's historical pieces and it is all, many different sections, it's even more important that the state come and that they be responsible in some right of the inventory that they have placed here, and then we can hopefully, between you and them and Roger and everybody, have a conversation with them about how do we move forward from this point to ensure that nothing's getting lost, that nothing, because I, I'm not, I don't want to be there that day that they come and say, oh, by the way, there's this artifact that's missing and it's worth this much money and where to go, and none of us have any idea because we didn't know it was there.
Agreed.
Thank you.
That's gonna be a tough task. So, okay, thank you. Any, any other questions while I'm up here? I'm sorry.
No other questions? Okay, no more questions with that. We need a motion?
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item 8A as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Moving on to item 8B. Discussion, Approval, Disapproval of Authorization, to authorize budget capacity to be moved from the wastewater fund to the highway user fund in the amount of $500,000. Becky, Rebecca Jimenez.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Town Council. This agenda item is requesting authorization to move budget capacity from the wastewater fund, monies that are not going to be used this year for a capital outlay into the highway user fund. We find ourselves with exceptional and unextraordinary expenses this year in the highway user fund, and because of our expenditure limitation, our capacity this year, we budgeted very lean and all of the accounts to fall under that capacity. The funds that are being, will be transferred are non-excludable, so they're one, they're the same kind of funds. It's not money that's being transferred, it's only capacity. So we can survive the end of the year and be able to do our projects.
Do we have any questions? No questions, then I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item 8B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Moving on to item 8C, Resolution Number 1865-23. Discussion, Approval, Disapproval of a Resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, authorizing the Amendment Number Four to the Intergovernmental Agreement, 12-054-I, AG Contract Number P0012012001857, with the Arizona Department of Transportation, Chris Ellis.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of council. Obviously, with this being the Fourth Amendment, this is the fifth time that I've presented in front of this council on this item here. At the end of this, there is an update on how much more this project is going to cost the town of $240,009. So when you look at that as our, our share at 5.7%, we are literally getting $4.21 million for that $240,000 expenditure. And I think we have the Maricopa Association of Governments to thank for that. They did approve that additional $4.21 million, and that will allow us to complete, I should say, in theory, that would allow us to complete this project. ADOT is awaiting this approval to invoice us this fiscal year that $200,000, and then I believe somewhere in June or July, it should be advertised, I believe, but it's, we're finally on that cusp. Hopefully, there's no more inflation on the construction side and we can get this project completed. Are there any questions?
Any questions? No questions? With that, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item 8C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Move on to item 8D. Ordinance Number 722-23, First Reading of an Ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, renaming Section 91 from the Fire Department to the Fire and Medical Department effective May 1st, 2023. Mr. Jim Walters.
Vice Mayor, members of council, as you read before, you have a change to Ordinance 722-23, which essentially is trying to cha, officially change the name of the Fire Department from Fire Department to Fire and Medical Department, as many other organizations have done, and I think it's important to have a little history as to how we got here. So I won't go too far back, I'll jump ahead, but some of you may remember the popular TV show Emergency with Johnny and Roy that are going and they're treating patients out in the field based out of California. That kind of represents a timeframe of when the Fire Department actually changed from just doing fire services to actually providing medical services with paramedics and things like that to help with better patient outcomes. Lots of studies to support that. Early in the 2000s, that's how long it took the fire service to start to, you know, kind of address that and be able to announce to our communities that, you know, that is also a service that we provide to our citizens. And, you know, with the fire service being highly based on tradition, wasn't always well-received, so it took a little bit of time to make it here to Arizona. So in about 2012, 2013, around that time, we started to see fire departments in Arizona, even some around us. Just a few examples, Maricopa and what's now Superstition, Chandler, Tempe, a lot of these, these bigger places around us, we started to see medical appearing in their titles. You also may look around and see some of our own Florence Fire Department trucks driving around the neighborhood, and it does in fact say Fire and Medical on the side of the truck. So interim, interim town manager Lisa Garcia and I started having some conversations to figure out exactly how this occurred and what we should do, which is where we end up tonight of, you know, doing, doing this the correct way, the proper way through an ordinance, and what you see in front of you is, is adding the name Medical to our, to our town code, 91.01, to, to make it official. This, this ordinance will also strike some language that is, that we believe is no longer, no longer acceptable for what our department does, and you can see that in front of you. So we'll be adding a section and Medical to, to effectively name the Florence Fire and Medical Department, and we'll remove sections under B that read, "The employees shall be able-bodied citizens who reside or do business activities normally within the confines of the town." That is a section that we're going to remove. But that's essentially how we got here. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? No questions?
So again, this is just the, just the first reading only, and this will be coming back to you at a later time. Thank you.
Just for a note of clarification, it does say on here that we should have an action, so.
Thank you, Michelle. I was gonna say the same thing.
At this time, we'll move on to item number 90, Legislative Report.
Mr. Graves is online, and he does have his hand up to come in.
Hello? Are you okay? Are you okay?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of council. I just have a couple additional updates and bills I'd like to highlight to accompany my legislative report this week. First, it's the 71st day of the legislative session. So far, over 1,600 bills have been introduced. Of those, 18 bills have been sent to the governor with all but two being vetoed. The two bills that have been signed into law thus far include Senate Bill 1103, which allows a variety of administrative planning, zoning approvals, and Senate Bill 1171, a tax conformity bill which aligns state tax laws with recent federal changes. That's a quick update of what bills have gone to the governor and the result. Before we get into some additional bill updates, I did want to mention that we're starting to see and hear of initial talks regarding the state budget. There's still no word on specifics or which high-profile bills may become part of budget negotiations, so we will keep an eye on that in the weeks ahead. Also, on your legislative report, you'll notice that I have added what the League calls their heat chart, which is a color coding of the bills the League is most and least concerned with. So that coding should help in reviewing the list and narrowing our priority items going forward, particularly as bills start falling off of the radar after crossover activities include this week. This week is the last activity for bills to be heard in the opposing chamber and so we should have a much clearer picture of what bills we'll need to work on going forward after this week. Regarding a few bill updates, I'll, I'll start with some of the finance bills we've been tracking. First off, on the food tax bill, HB 2061, this bill was retained on the House calendar, excuse me, the House Committee of the Whole Calendar last Tuesday. And so that basically means that it'll be pushed out and rescheduled if they can gather enough votes to pass that bill this week. Next, there is House Bill 2003. This is the corporate income tax bill that will result in a sizable reduction to state shared revenues throughout Arizona. This bill has passed through the House, was heard in Senate appropriations for discussion only last week and is being voted on tomorrow. And while the League believes this bill would be vetoed by HOBs, they're not taking any vetoes for granted at this point of the session with budget negotiations looming. So if this bill makes it out of committee, we will touch base with our legislators before it goes to the Senate floor likely later this week. Next, there's new income tax reduction proposal. That's Senate Bill 1577 and SCR 1035, which is a mere resolution that would go to voters instead of going to the governor if it's passed by the Senate. This bill and resolution would decrease individual income tax rates by 50% of any structural surplus indefinitely. And so what that means, if the state had a surplus of, say, $200 million, $100 million would go towards offering income tax relief for that year. However, this bill does not have a mechanism to ensure certain baseline spending remains in effect during economic downturns. And so this is a bill of concern for the League going forward. Both Representatives Cook and Martinez were highlighted by the League as key votes on Senate Bill 1577 and so we maybe need to reach out to them over the next week, week or so. If this bill moves forward, I'll, I'll be reaching out with some information on that bill. Next, we have a few zoning and business licensing bills I wanted to highlight. First, there's Senate Bill 1162, which would permit home-based businesses as a use by right and would prohibit cities from requiring business licenses for home-based businesses. This bill did pass through the Senate and was sent to the House. Potential home-based businesses could include auto garages, woodshops, or dentist offices. This is one of the bills the League is most concerned with and so we will be looking at the calendars, see if it's scheduled for committee later this week and we'll be reaching out if necessary. Next, just wanted to give a quick update on the by-right housing bill, Senate Bill 1117, which has been widely discussed and debated over the last few weeks. There was some good news early last week when this bill failed on Senate third read. However, the motion, excuse me, the sponsor did make a motion to reconsider this bill, which was accepted. However, a new striker, which contains many of the elements of this by-right housing bill, was just dropped and so that may be the sponsor's Plan B to get some sort of by-right housing legislation through this session. So we will be watching that bill very closely as this by-right housing bill has a decent amount of bipartisan support. Finally, I wanted to touch base on Senate Bill 1268. This is a bill that I briefed the council on during my first update and would require, excuse me, would increase the requirements for annexation to 60% of property owners instead of the current 50%. The League did submit an amendment that would restrict this bill to Maricopa County, but the sponsor was not interested in running that change. And so this bill was transmitted to the House and was unanimously approved by the House Government Committee last Wednesday. So we'll be keeping an eye on this bill and reaching out if necessary later this week. And with that, those are the bills and updates I wanted to highlight and be happy to take any questions.
Do we have any questions? We have no questions at this time. Thank you, Mr. Graves. At this time, we'll move on to Item 10, Town Manager's Report.
Good evening. Last time I was here, I was hours old. Now I'm two weeks old, so just learning the ropes. Basically, the last couple of weeks, doing a lot of orientation, meeting the staff, going on some tours, getting a chance to see some of the places. There's a lot going on, so it's still gonna take me a little bit to do that. I, you know, just tomorrow, starting with Harvey who's been out for a couple of weeks and so it's, yeah, it's been a process and I'm working through that process every day. It's been kind of nice. A couple times I've had the opportunity to just kind of walk up Main Street and just walk in some doors. So if you hear that that's happening, it's generally by happenstance or opportunity that I have to just kind of spend a few minutes to walk up Main Street and start to do that. We are working with some of the larger businesses as well, just trying to schedule me some time to get to know who they are and what we're doing. That's something that I feel is important for the manager to have an understanding of and so I'll be continuing that. And then obviously, budget is right around the corner, so me getting kind of force-fed a lot of budget information and understanding and then this next week is actually working with the staff and understanding what they had requested. So the team has really got me up to speed really well over the last couple of weeks. And then got a chance to have some corned beef on Friday with the seniors. So the irony of the small world I live in, one of the families there is connected to a family I knew in high school back way in my time in Colorado. So it's a small world we all live in and kind of fun to, to connect. So been able to see a few things and we're enjoying our transition. And then I will just say, probably the most important thing I'll say, most of you I think are aware, barring any really unforeseen circumstances, tomorrow, on Wednesday morning, the Addaway Road will open back up for traffic and that's a really big deal. And I, I will just tell you that in meetings that we've had internally and externally, I just, I've been impressed with the contractor, contractor's response and how they've gotten after it to get this done in a timely fashion. That's impressive and their desire to do that is, is really pretty impressive from my standpoint. I don't know that they were responding to pressure. I think they were realizing how important this project is as a citizen and dealing with it that way. So it's just good to see a contractor respond and I appreciate the public's patience. Hopefully this will alleviate a lot of the pressure that we're having out on 79 and the bridge project, but good stuff. Thank you.
At this time, we'll, you know, Item 11, Call to the Public, the second call. Is there any one in the, in the public that would like to speak? No hands, so, okay, go ahead, sir.
I am a member of the folks over in the Del Webb community. And today we had a very tough conversation with the, some member from the council here as well as somebody from the county. There were a lot of questions unanswered and so for that, I would like to suggest that perhaps our new town councilman would be able to come over and talk with us whenever things get kind of squared away. I would also suggest to come over and meet some of the, the folks who are in the professional positions over there, just because it's probably the biggest part of the city over there. Many of the council members even live over there. So I would certainly like to have you come over and, and talk with us at your convenience. I, I know you're brand new. I was here when you were installed last time, but I would invite you to come over and, and meet with several of us, okay?
Sir, for the record, could you please give us your name and address?
My name is Mick McLaughlin and I live at 4389 North Petersburg Drive in Florence. And Michelle, I would suggest to you also, and I, this is coming off the top of my head, both of these issues, but I would suggest that you ask for photos of all of the, the pieces that you mentioned that you'd like to have more. I'd like to see the photos there to make sure that everything is there when things change, okay?
Sir, I have a question. Can you tell the rest of us what this is in regards to? What issue are you?
There was a conversation today about roads and, and building and what's gonna happen, you know, how are we going to kind of get through all of these different road changes? When is it gonna happen? How much is it gonna cost? What, how are this gonna be paid for? Just loads of things like that going on. There were a couple people here tonight who also came over and I decided that I was going to, to bring it out to you folks. So it was really, really a tough conversation. There were probably several hundred people in the audience who were all ready to ask questions about that, that whole issue. So in any case, we'll see. There's plenty to talk about, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? No one on the, online, so I will close, close, call to the public and then open call to the council, current events only. Councilmember Maldonado.
I'd just like, like to say thank you for those that came out the third Friday and supported that. To Maggie, I'll say congratulations on having your business, the Flower Girl, open for a year. I'm sorry I couldn't make it down to the other side of the street, but I do try to support you as much as I can. And like I said, hopefully everybody enjoyed themselves out there and some folks were able to get corned beef and cabbage. If you didn't get any, just come by a little earlier next year, because we sell out pretty quick at the post. So, but I'm, I'm glad to see, I got to walk around on Friday and see some of the businesses and see a lot of, a lot of progress in the businesses that are about to open. So I just can't, I'm excited, so I can't wait till they open, so, thank you.
I also attended third Fridays and had a really good time. I, I liked that there was two bands, one on, on the south and one on the north and I thought it went really well. Lots of food vendors, lots of people. I went early on, so I went from like 5:00 to 6:45-ish, but there was already a good gathering of people even at that time. So I just want to tell everybody, you know, good job and thank you guys for showing up to that and helping out those businesses down there. I also wanted to say, for anybody wanting to go on Saturday, the Michelle Gallagher softball tournament is happening. It'll be going on all day from, I think, 8:00 AM till a winner's announced, usually at 8:00 at night, 9:00 at night. All the money raised goes towards the kids and scholarships for the kids in town and less fortunate children to play sports. So they do have food, they do have raffles that you can put in to win and lots of things to do for the family down there. So if you guys aren't doing anything, go support us, we have a team. Say a little prayer for us and hope to see some of you guys there and remember it's for the kids.
Councilmember Neal.
I really have nothing. I came down with a bug for spring break and just take care of yourselves because it really knocked me right on my butt. So I didn't get to go out and check out none of the stuff, but I heard that everything was very good, so that's it.
I have been under the weather myself, so I apologize for missing our last meeting. I would like to ask also if we could get an update on the Silver King, the empty unit. And then I also wanted to let you know that I alerted chief yesterday, the door upstairs that does not go to one of the units, but the, the door up top on the balcony was wide open last night. I got a call from a resident that drove by and saw it, so if we could just figure out what that issue is. I know we have some problems with the, the locks, they just, you know, a good wind will come by and it'll blow it open, so if we could figure out how to make sure that doesn't happen so the businesses don't have any issues, that would be greatly appreciated. And then I love that Councilwoman Bucialato down there is telling you to come watch our team that you're not a part of. You did not join. Oh, you finally decided to join? Okay, thank you, thank you, because she wasn't on it earlier. She's leaving me out there by myself. Yeah, yes, so please come watch us. I'm gonna make a fool out of myself. I do not play sports and I run like a duck, so this is gonna be hilarious to watch me try to play softball. I can't hit a ball with a bat to save my life, but if it were kickball, I would be really good at it because that's a much bigger. Other than that, Councilmember Maldonado did have on his sheet that it was also Sweet Pea's anniversary, but he forgot to say that. I saw it written on his sheet. So Sweet Pea's also celebrated their one-year anniversary along with the flower shop and I can't wait till next year when we're welcoming the barbecue place and the Irish pub for their one-year anniversary and we just keep growing. I'm so excited for our, our Main Street and our town and I'm excited because it's not just Main Street that's growing, our town is growing with houses and businesses and lots of excitement, so I'm excited.
Okay, Councilmember Kristin.
One of the joys is a lot of the things have already been said, so I would echo a lot of the same sentiments. Yes, we got signed up. We had no choice. We got signed up into the, into the tournaments, so I guess I'm gonna suddenly learn how to play sports like that. Yeah, so it should be fun. I hope everybody comes out and like the sentiments that Michelle said, that, you know, I'm really excited to see the growth in Florence and the sense of community continues to be the small-town community that we've grown to love and that we know and yet we're growing. So it's this really awesome time right now where we have this perfect balance, I think, of growth and development, but yet small-town feel and good sense of community. So just proud to be a part of it all, so that's all I have for tonight.
I don't have a whole lot, I just have, Mr. Martin, when you go to meet with these...
Yeah, so it should be fun, I hope everybody comes out, and like the sentiments that Michelle said, that, you know, I'm really excited to see the growth in Florence, in the sense of community continues to be the small-town community that we've grown to love and that we know, and yet we're growing. So it's this really awesome time right now where we have this perfect balance, I think, of growth and development, but yet small-town feel and good sense of community. So just proud to be a part of it all, so, that's all I have for tonight.
I don't have a whole lot, I just have, Mr. Martin, when you go to meet with these people up there in the Anthem area, if you don't mind, I would like to come with you. I did attend the East Valley Transportation Infrastructure's Shareholders Meeting. There's a lot of good information about roads and bills and things that are coming down the pike as far as who's going to be paying for them, so I might have some answers for Some very exciting stuff, we're still waiting on the legislature to approve some of these things. Hopefully, if everything goes well, then we can start with some construction here in the near future. I think that transportation, right now, I was just having a conversation with Mr. Martin earlier, that I think we need to put, put that to the forefront as far as what we have going on. Economic development is a very important thing to me, but I believe that if we don't fix these roads, we're not going to get that development, so, and I want to see more commercial development come this way. With that said, I thank you all in the public for being here tonight, and that's all from me. With that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are now adjourned.